Is Patrick's camera frozen?
Hey, we are live.
Before we start, I will remind council that this portion of the meeting is being recorded and will be posted online. Tonight, staff are also testing live streaming to Facebook. I will now do a roll call of council for the benefit of the public watching this meeting. When I call your name, please wave at your camera, say here or present. Redicoff, I'm present and chairing the meeting. Mayor Shontz? Counselor Martin?
I'm here.
Counselor McMillan?
You're?
Counselor Merlehan?
Present.
Counselor Shontz?
Present.
Thank you very much. First thing on our agenda then is disclosures of pecuniary interest. They need to disclose for this meeting. Seeing none, we'll go on to the next. We have planning public. We don't have anything under that. We have number three presentations. There's nothing there. Number four is the delegations. And the load restriction on Home Road, which Jeff had sent out on the emails today. I'll ask the deputy to read the comments received from the delegation and then really hear from staff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The comments I have sent to council and I'll also read them now, since they were circulated after the revised agenda. This is April 7th to her worship mayor, Edward County. It is an addendum to my letter dated April 4th, 2020, and I quote, "Thank you to you and your staff for agreeing to address this issue so rapidly. A few points for consideration in your discussions. We believe we have an understanding and informal agreement that we were exempt from the five restrictions on Home Road as illustrated by the location of the posted sign. Staff have made it clear that without a formal agreement, there is no agreement regardless of the location of the posted sign. It is my belief, even in this fine print world, that the 30-year-plus history of an agreement is an indication that there is an agreement. Further, consider that only construction soils moving at this point are essential services. Further, consider that we are asking, sorry, further consider that what we are talking about is the possibility of a $500 road regrading. And I have already agreed to pay for that. There is no risk or cost to the town. I have attached specific requests from essential services contractors asking us to remain open. Best regards, Jay Feeger." I think I've got that right. Those are the only additional comments submitted from the delegation.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Pupay, do you have any other comments to make?
Thank you through you, Chair Redicoff, to council. I do, I think some background is in order. So I'd like to dive into that a bit here. So this began back in 2018. I was not in the forefront of those discussions. It was being run by EPS and it was Dan Canali who had met with Mr. Feeger and was reviewing the fill management plan for the restoration of Martin property pit. I was on the periphery. I don't unfortunately have the files available in front of me, given the current situation that we're under. And I wish I could provide a bit better chronology. But I do know that Mr. Feeger is accurate. In the summer of 2018, he engaged the township. There were three meetings that were arranged with Mr. Feeger. He had only attended one. I was involved in all three of those and unfortunately, he was not in attendance of the other two. We never got a response on why. Township comments were not unfortunately addressed through our review process. And this is when I became involved as I was tasked to look to try to understand what our rights and obligations are with respect to fill management. So I would remind council that all rural township roads are under a high home load per axle restriction between March 1st until April 30th. It is enforceable under the Highway Traffic Act. And there are some exemptions that are only granted by council through the enactment of a bylaw. The township does have a very select few exemptions there on Minto Street to facilitate Conestoga Meat Packers operations. Greenhouse Road Council, we reported that just enacted an exemption for the construction of residential development of Thomasville Home subdivision. Henry Streets and Three Bridges Road as well as St. Jacobs. This is due to Home Harbor's operations as well as Florida Road. The council had endorsed funding to eliminate the half-load restriction between Listwood Road and Line 86. Mr. Feeger does mention that his services are allowing essential work to continue. We don't dispute that that may indeed be the case. Staff are certainly not shutting down the services. Mr. Feeger just needs to simply operate under the same load restrictions that have existed throughout the province. Unless, of course, council wishes to grant Mr. Feeger an exemption. It is our opinion that Mr. Feeger has operated contrary to the load restrictions that have always been in place and staff have not been made aware of the abuses that occurred last season. We have not received any concerns from the Lockard Pit that also has an access near Home Road as well. So with that, I would be more than happy to entertain any questions or comments from council.
Counsel, any discussion of the requests that's been before you? Mayor Shontz and then Counselor Merlehan?
Thank you. Jared, what are the, like, if we allow them to operate, what are the implications for us on that road?
So thank you through you, Chair Redicoff, to Mayor Shontz. The reason half-loads exist is because the road base can't sustain it certainly through these wet conditions that we're experiencing. So, you know, we appreciate Mr. Feeger suggesting that he was willing to grade the road. We don't know that that actually did occur last year, but he was willing to do that. It's not what happens immediately. It's the overtime effect. So we won't really notice the damage or know what that damage really occurs with that road base. It certainly is not structurally adequate to do for all the heavy loading and hence why the entire province is under a half-load restriction through the season.
Follow-up? Mayor Shontz?
Thank you. He indicates that he's been doing this for quite a long time. Has it compromised the road?
So we're not clear what Mr. Feeger is referring to. We've only known Mr. Feeger since 2018. And we weren't aware that he was actually hauling material last year. So that's new to us too. We didn't have a complaint and we certainly weren't aware of that. The pit has existed for a long time and the pit has not been operable for a long time. So I'm wondering if Mr. Feeger is sort of extending that to the Martin pit itself, saying it's been in operation for a long time, although it hasn't been mining aggregates for as long as I'm aware, for quite a while. They're just in the restoration process.
Okay, thank you.
It's like a great answer for you. I'm a little confused on that comment, sorry.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah, thank you through you, Chair Redicoff, to Mr. Pupay. I feel like maybe there should be a little, if you have a little bit more background on the reason why we're getting a letter right now. I mean, this is the first I'm hearing about it late this afternoon. We got this and it got added to the agenda. What prompted this letter? If you haven't heard from him since 2018, I'm just wondering why today, all of a sudden at the last minute, we're dealing with this.
Good question through you, Chairman Redicoff, to Counselor Merlehan. So the letter is dated April 4th. That is the first time that we got wind. We received a complaint of truck traffic on the road. We investigated and realized they were contrary to the load restriction. We then engaged Waterloo Regional Police Services because that is enforceable under the Highway Traffic Act. Obviously, the trucks then obeyed. And that's when we heard from Mr. Feeger. So in our opinion, he was operating illegally and then was caught and is now looking for council to provide an exemption.
Okay, so is he been fined and is he looking for some sort of leniency in that regard? Or is it just he wants to continue to operate his pit throughout the rest of April?
Through you, Chair Redicoff, to council. Our understanding, he just wants to continue his operation. It wasn't expecting a stoppage, I assume. So it's also my understanding as well that the truck driver is charged. So they will not pass a half-load sign as well as the potential operator. So Mr. Feeger is running the operation for the fill management. He does not own the trucks, it's my understanding. He localizes those trucks. So when he has no trucks that are willing to run, I guess that's where he's running into some issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you through you to Jared. Am I correct that the signs were not up on March 1st and they were only put up in the last week or so after the complaint?
Thank you through Chair Redicoff to Counselor Martin. So the signs were always up, but the signs were at a different location. They weren't prominently displayed, but they certainly were up. That's evidenced on Google Maps. You can see the signs were up. So what operations staff did is move them to bookend the road essentially. It's where the sign should be.
And a follow-up, if I may, please?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think with the spring that we've had, the frost is all over the roads and they're dried up because I've graded the road every day. So there's very little chance of damage being done at this point. If the roads were wet and broken up from the frost, that'd be a different story. So somehow or another, since he's done it for years and had sort of a gentleman's agreement with whoever, I would like to see that he gets an exemption for the next three weeks. And that'll give you a year to come up with the proper documents that you need.
Counselor Shontz?
Thank you through you to Mr. Pupay. So my understanding is that the sign was located past the property on Home Road. Is that correct?
Through Chair Redicoff to Counselor Shontz. It's correct. It was past the entrance to this pit, yes.
So that's what, a kilometer down the road? So that would have been there purposely, not put on the corner of the road and placed there by someone for a reason. So I have a hard time believing that we didn't know about it. It seems kind of odd that it would be placed a mile in or a kilometer in off of the road and not right on the corner where it should be. So can you respond to that at all?
Through you, Chair Redicoff to Counselor Shontz. So absolutely. I guess the problem is that there is no bylaw exempting that stretch of road. Home Road is not exempt. It doesn't matter where the sign is. So we put the sign where we felt it could have been. Certainly, is it possible that there was a verbal agreement at some point? It is possible. Did speak with Barry Baldacero about this. No recollection in his mind of any granting or verbal agreement. A verbal agreement wouldn't really hold up in Highway Traffic Act anyway. The police wouldn't be able to enforce a half-load season regardless of where the sign was. So we feel we corrected the situation, but it is quite possible, Counselor Shontz, that that may in fact have happened at some point.
Okay, so could I just have a follow-up then? So I guess we're one week into April. We've only got three weeks left. I think this is kind of short notice to try and change things and replace the sign. So I'm with Counselor Martin that I think we should do something for the next three weeks. But then I think we should go through the process and get it tidied up for next year. And whatever that process is going to be. And I guess that would also allow us time to see whether, in fact, he is going to come to the party and do the grading like he suggests he is. So that would be my suggestion.
Any other comments? Either Jared or Counselor McMillan?
Thank you, Chair Redicoff. Actually, is there any way we could get people who aren't talking to mute their mics? I'm getting a lot of feedback here from Counselor Martin. I think we hear a lot of, I hear anyway, a lot of stuff from your mic. Is there any way we could?
I don't think it's from mine.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. A couple of things. I guess that was kind of clear until Counselor Shontz just asked his question. Is the sign currently up at the end of the road or is that a process that we have to go through? And then my second question, if that's okay, Chair Redicoff, is if we don't grant an exemption, he can still operate. It just has to be with half-load trucks? Is that correct?
Through you, Chair Redicoff, to Counselor McMillan. That is correct. The sign is up. The sign has always been up. But to Counselor Shontz's point, the sign was in a different location. So it was past the entrance to the pit before we moved it to the end so that all the truckers could see as soon as they turned off of Line 86 onto Home Road. They instantly saw it. The half-load restriction was always on the road. There was no exemption in our bylaw. And you're correct in that business can continue, it's just half-load.
So the sign is where it ultimately needs to be and should have been from the start. There's no process to go through. There's no, like, that's done. And what we're talking about is granting an exemption for the next three weeks to have full-load operation until that restriction gets lifted, May 1st? Is that, am I on the right page here?
Through you, Chair Redicoff, to Counselor McMillan, is it exactly correct? It's councils, it can only be, exemptions can only occur through council decision, enacted through a bylaw. And simply put, it would be March 1st of 2020 through to April 30th of 2020. And then next year, there would be no exemption on the road.
Counselor McMillan?
So yeah, not a follow-up. My questions are answered. Thank you, Mr. Pupay, but just comments. I don't know how eager I would be to set a precedent of granting an exemption if he's still allowed to operate for the next three weeks just under the half-load restriction. I think that because something was done, maybe done, we don't know. But let's say that there was a handshake agreement. I mean, that's improper and it's wrong. And because something was done wrong before, probably doesn't make it right to do the wrong thing now. We found out about it as soon as we found out about it. I think we need to act appropriately. It's unfortunate if somebody in the past let this business owner operate outside of the bounds of the Highway Traffic Act. But I don't think that we can, I don't think it's a good idea for us to say, because the frost is out of the ground this year, we should grant the exemption. And then, you know, next year, somebody's making a request and we're going to go out and test whether the frost is out of the road or not. I, it's not, it's not a road that I think we should go down. We know what the right thing is. We know what the law is. We know what the law always was. And we're not shutting down the business. They're just being required to act in accordance to the Highway Traffic Act. So I don't think I could support an exemption, even though it is just for three weeks.
Any other comments? We're sort of divided on this. That's what I hear. Counselor Merlehan?
Sorry, wrong button. Yeah, through you, Chair Redicoff, to Mr. Pupay. Two questions. The first one would be in regard to, in regards to the complaint that was made. Whoever complained, what was the nature of the complaint? Was it damaging the road or anything like that? And then my second question would be the condition of the road at the moment. I haven't heard from you about those conditions, whether there's frost in the road or not. I know the last couple of years has been especially hard on the gravel roads. And we're super bad last year. Been getting complaints this year. So maybe can you comment on the condition of those roads and your opinion on what a full load of gravel would do to Ham Road?
Thank you. Through you, Chair Redicoff, to Counselor Merlehan. So I don't have the exact specifics of the complaint and I don't know the exact condition of the road as it is now. I do know that staff were out there. I do know that staff did take that complaint and did address it as we outlined tonight. Certainly, our gravel roads have, as most council, I'm sure, are aware and have seen complaints come in. They're not in great shape. And we obviously went through a bit of a rotational issue too. So we do have full grade, all our graders are back out on our roads, making their way around. So we fully expect to get our gravel roads to where they need to be. It's been a bit of a tough year, as it seems, said I say that every year. So the one point, though, I think that Counselor McMillan brought up that I think is worth mentioning is that I think it's important for council to at least put the decision in this context. The filling that is going to be occurring at this property is not going to occur this year. It's not going to be finished this year. This is an ongoing process. So I think that's important for council to know that. I think that if it is council's desire to grant an exemption, I think that it's likely that you're going to get this request annually until the work is done. I think that's a fair point.
Thank you, Jared. Any other comments? Do we need a motion for this? A motion to?
Resolution to give an exemption to the bylaw for this year?
So the motion would be for a resolution. Counselor McMillan?
Sorry, was that staff's recommendation? Is that why there's, is that why? Because short of a recommendation coming to council, wouldn't it be up to council if we wanted to move to have the, like, my computer froze?
It would be our prerogative to make the opportunity to have the owner have an exemption to the bylaw.
And then short of a motion for an exemption, there would just be no exemption, right? If we didn't move anything, vote on anything, there would be. If I'm correct, we don't need a motion to not grant a?
Actually, we don't need a motion. Is that correct? Counselor Shontz?
Yeah, I'll make the motion that we grant it this year. And that we, if they want it further, then we'll have to review it in full and then decide whether we're going to grant the leniency. Obviously, it's happened before, so there's, we're not setting a precedence. I think at this late stage of the game and with the confusion, I agree with Counselor Martin that it's dry now. Chances of causing a lot of damage for the next three weeks are probably pretty small. And I think we can get by with that for this year and then clean up for next year. So I would make that a motion.
Do you have a second, or? You have any more comments, questions? So the motion's up. Mayor Shontz, sorry, sorry.
Just to be clear then, are we asking staff to go back and solicit some kind of an agreement with Mr. Feeger for next year? Larry says no.
Counsel, would that direct that Counsel Shontz?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. I would say it would be up to him to come in lots of time so that we can review it. We would just grant it for the next three weeks or till the end of April. And then it's up to him to forward it. We won't follow up on it. And if nothing happens between now and next year, then it's half-load.
I guess I wanted to make it clear to him that we don't want to do this next April. So if he wants some other arrangement, he needs to do that in good time.
So we have motion on the table. All those in favor? That's three. All those opposed? Two, yes. The motion's passed, so they granted the exemption for the three weeks until April 30th. Thank you very much for the conversation and the decision. Number five on your agenda is unfinished business. There's none. Then number six is the consent items. We have four items listed on the agenda for approval that are considered routine and usually enacted in one motion. However, any council member may request one or more items being removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and/or action. Counsel, is there any discussion or would anyone like to move approval of all the consent items? Mayor Shontz?
Thank you. Just in 6.11, the statement of remuneration. I just wanted to be clear that the remuneration for the Board of Directors for Waterloo North Hydro is paid by Waterloo North Hydro and not through the township levy.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shontz, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd like to discuss 2020, sorry, the treasure for the Parks and Rec separately.
Okay, that's, which one is it, two or three or four?
It's four, sorry.
Four, okay, yeah. Do you want it, do you want a, just a discussion or or you want to pull it out and vote on it separately?
Well, it doesn't really matter. We can discuss it first and then vote on them all together, however you want to handle it.
Okay, and then Counselor McMillan, you had a comment?
I was just going to move approval of consent agenda items 6.11, 6.12, 6.13.
Okay, do you have a second, or? Counselor, Mayor Shontz, sorry?
I'll second it, but can I make one comment on 6.13 as well?
Okay, yeah.
And that is, I noticed that the Parks and Rec Reserve is now in a positive position. And that's been sitting, I believe, Mr. Patrick in a negative position for quite a number of years. So that's good to see.
Okay, thank you for the comment. Yeah, so I have a motion on the floor to accept one, two, and three of the consent items. I had a second, right?
Yes.
Oh, Mayor Shontz, yes. All those in favor? Okay, that's passed. Okay, so let's go to number four. Larry, you have a comment? Or let's have someone move it first? Counselor McMillan, the second? Counselor Shontz? Larry, you have a comment on number four?
Yes, I do. I guess my comment is, and I don't know whether it's appropriate or not, but since it's here, I'm going to ask the question and then we'll go from there. Probably to Mr. Patrick and maybe also Ann. But in this time that we're seeing all this turmoil and we're not sure what's going to be happening in the next weeks, months, year, we don't know. I'm wondering if it's wise to be transferring those funds out of there, $271,926, just for repairing playgrounds and ball diamonds. And I'm, I don't know whether we can discuss that at this point, but I'm under the feeling that we should be leaving that money in there until things settle down, until we really realize what's going to happen with all of this that's going on.
Richard, do you have a comment?
Yes, absolutely. Through you, Mr. Chairman, my response to Counsel Shontz is this has to do with expenditures that happened last year in 2019. So these are not expenditures that happened or are going to be happening this year. So they have already occurred, so they're already out of the reserve fund. I think the discussion may come around what's going to be happening in our 2020 capital budget. And I believe we have about $230,000 that potentially could come out of this reserve fund for this year. But as councils are aware, we are going to be talking about capital expenditures in the coming week and weeks and talking about potential deferral projects.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel Shontz, sorry?
Yes, sorry. I guess I didn't realize it was 2019. I thought it was 2020, so I'm ready to move it or continue on and have the vote.
Counsel McMillan moved it. Larry seconded it. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, that's passed. Items for information on your agenda, none. Staff reports and memos, none. Number eight, other business? None. Outstanding activity list as of April 3rd, 2020? Are there any items from the outstanding activity list that council wishes to discuss? Comment on? Seeing none, thank you. Correspondence, number 10? Would counsel like to discuss any of the correspondence on the agenda? There's three over there. Counselor Shontz and then Counselor McMillan? Counselor Shawn and then Counsel McMillan?
Yeah, I would like to, 10.1, I would like to support that and, and send, send a letter similar to what we received here because farming is a big business in our area. And I think we have to support the farmers. So I would like to see us support that.
We need a motion for that?
I want you to endorse.
An endorsement of that? So we need a vote? Okay, so Larry has endorsed that we endorse the Kirkland Lake Resolution regarding Bill 156, Security from Trespass and Protecting Food Safety Act, a second. Counsel Martin, any other discussion on that letter? Counsel McMillan?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Through you, actually, my question was about this as well. And what I was wondering, I had some similar concerns to Counselor Shawn's. And actually, I was just going to ask if people had heard of this type of thing happening in our, in our township. Because while I, I, I think, I actually don't eat beef or pork because I, I don't want to see, I don't want to see cows or pigs in that environment. I think that any activism that's addressed at farmers is inappropriate. I think there's a different way to express those concerns if people have them. And, and so my question was, have people heard of this type of thing happening in our township? I got to count your staff.
I, I remember some farmers in, when I worked in Florida that when they went to Conestoga Meat Packers, sometimes there were, but not onto the farm, no. I've never heard any of that. Any complaints at staff level? I'm sure, okay, thank you. Any other discussion on number one? Counsel Merlehan?
Yeah, through you Chair Redicop, just on that front. The only thing I've heard on, with the farming community, I guess, would be in Breslau around Conestoga Meat Packers, there'd be activists and stuff. But I'm not sure, you know, how aggressive they are. But it's a kind of a regular type protest about pork and animal rights and stuff. That's about all I've heard, so that's it.
Thank you, thank you. Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of the Kirkland Lake Resolution regarding Bill 156? That we endorse that? All those in favor? That's passed, thank you very much. Anything else on the other two letters? Public notice, we don't have anything. Notice of closed meetings, none. Notice of motion, none. And I have a motion to adjourn. Counsel Shawn says seconded by Counsel Martin, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Want us to stay put for a few?